This time, we will move to the agenda. And the first item is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a means of expediting routine matters which come before the commission for approval. The consent portion of the agenda is approved by one non-debatable motion. Bidding Commissioner wishes to remove an item from the consent portion of the agenda, that item becomes the first order of business on the regular agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve today's consent agenda, consisting specifically of items A through H. And that would be consideration of auditor-approved claims for payment, May 16th, 2018 through June 5th, 2018. Consideration of our regular commission meeting minutes of May 15th and special commission meeting minutes of May 30th of this year. We have no consideration of administrative adjustments on real property or personal property, but on item E, we have three applications for property tax abatements. And also on item F, consideration of application for settlement or deferral of property taxes. There are seven. Consideration of approval of a plan of expenditure of revenue raised through the beer tax. State fiscal year 2019 with the reporting period of July 1, 2018 through June 30th, 2019. Acknowledgement of publishing notice of adoption of ordinance 2018-1115-0 on Saturday, May 19th. And also items I and J. I being consideration of authorization of individuals to manage Washington County's Public Treasurers Investment Fund, PTIF account. And J, consideration of amended agreement between Washington County and BCBB, Inc. for the Washington County Attorney's Office. That would be my motion.
Commissioner, on C and D, we actually do have real property and personal property. We just don't have the number of each one listed, but we-
Okay, there are then?
Correct.
Okay, so the motion stands as read with C and D. Thank you.
Very good, Mr. Chairman. I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. This time, we come to our regular agenda items for consideration. The first item is IHC Health Services of Public Hearing, which, and I'll just go ahead and read it, says conducting a public hearing with respect to the proposed issuance of Utah County, Utah, the insured, of its hospital revenue bonds in one or more series in an aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $200 million with respect to certain healthcare facilities of IHC Health Services located in Washington County, Utah, for the purposes of financing, refinancing, providing reimbursement for acquisitions, improvements, and equipment of such healthcare facilities, and consideration for adopting a resolution approving the issuance of a bond for the purposes of Section 147-F of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended. So this time, I will call the public meeting, the public hearing, open. If any of the public would like to come forward, please come to the microphone and state your I see no one coming forward, so at this time, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and move to item number two on the agenda, which is consideration of resolution number R-2018-2331, a resolution approving the proposed issuance of Utah County, Utah, of its hospital revenue bond in one or more series in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $200 million with respect to facilities in Washington County, Utah. And I believe we have a representative here, Matt Doug Dahl, who'd like to come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner, great to be with you today. Appreciate the commission putting this on the agenda and Nicole for helping facilitate that. I'm Matt Doug Dahl with George K. Baum and Company. I work with Intermountain Healthcare when it issues bonds. And what's taking place here, first of all, Washington County is not going into the healthcare business. And just wanted to say that, but also wanted to explain briefly why the commission has to approve the issuance of Utah County's bond. There are, there's state code and federal tax code that when a 501(c) like Intermountain Healthcare, it's to access the tax-exempt bond market, access lower interest rates, it has to do so through a conduit. So there is a Utah Act, Industrial Revenue Bond Act, such that has very clear steps and guidelines for that to happen. For the last six years, Utah County has been that conduit. But whenever those bond proceeds will be spent within a local jurisdiction, the local governing body has to approve the issuance of that amount to be spent within county. And in this case, approximately $200 million will be spent in Washington County, primarily for an expansion to the Dixie Medical Center, but also a new medical clinic. And that is essentially what's considering. Happy to answer any questions that you have, but just want to clearly state that there is no financial ramification to Washington County, full indemnification, there's no financial obligation ever.
Well, this is a conduit bond issue, and it's not going to actually work against credit of the county that we're able to bond against-
Correct.
-future projects. It doesn't care that.
That's exactly correct.
This is going to allow those tax-exempt bond revenues to be expanded in Washington County as a result of our approval.
Yes, it does not have any financial, doesn't create any issues for the county, it doesn't eat into bank qualification, doesn't eat into any of your statutory bond limits, not balance sheet, not even mentioned in your financial statement.
Thank you.
I think it's kind of funny that a private company has to come and ask us to spend $200 million in our own county.
Well, I think what we are able to do by using this conduit mechanism is extend the county's tax-exempt status to the nonprofit entity. And that will save, I would imagine, at least two or three, a couple hundred basis points on the bonding costs, which would be substantial. And if we didn't do that, then our residents would actually have to pick up that cost in higher healthcare premiums. So because of that explanation, I would make a motion in support of Resolution R-2018-2331, a resolution approving the proposed issuance by Utah County, Utah, of its hospital revenue bonds in one or more series in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $200 million with respect to facilities in Washington County, Utah.
And, Mr. Chairman, I will second that motion.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item number three is consideration of purchase request by Ray Boyer.
Okay, the first one is for the re-roofing of the St. George Senior Center, and that's a total of $25,910. And then, the next one is for advertising for the Silver Reef Museum activities for a total of $10,000. And then, the last one is for staff rooms for the Iron Man per the contract, and that's for $17,581.08. And unless there's any questions, that is all.
Looks straightforward. Good to get the roof over there at the Council of Aging.
And I'd just mention too as well that Silver Reef Museum is actually owned in Washington County and managed again by another great nonprofit. Brings a lot of tourism and guests that come to the county find out a very intriguing place to visit, I think. Great job.
And they're just getting better all the time. That's what's so great about it. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchase requests that have been identified. Ray?
I'll second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item number four is consideration of personal property penalty reduction request. We have Adele Murphy with us today.
Adele, how's it going?
Hey, how are you?
Very good.
Hey, this is a request for a reduction in a personal property penalty. It comes to you under Chapter 13 of the county ordinance. This taxpayer, business owner filed his personal property taxes two days late, and the ordinance, our state ordinance requires us to charge a penalty of 10% or $25, whichever is greater. This penalty is large. Want the amount, I can tell you, but it, they were two days late. So they asked if there was something they could do with, about the penalty, and the ordinance basically allows for a reduction. It's not a waiver, but it allows for a reduction under certain circumstances. The request is to come to the assessor first in writing, and then it comes to you, to this body, and you have 60 days to decide. For this one, one of the ways you can, a condition, is whether there were extraordinary and unanticipated circumstances occurring during the filing period. So the circumstances here are the owner of the business gave the secretary the forms and the taxes to pay, and the secretary put them in a drawer, and then got, had a sick child for a couple of days, and the owner didn't know they were in a drawer, the secretary was gone, so when she came back to work and found him in the drawer, came and paid him, and they were two days late. The penalty is $6,300. So they're requesting a reduction. We've had numerous penalties this year on personal property, anywhere from $25 up to $4,700, but this one is asking for the reduction, and I would assume they're saying that it's unanticipated circumstances. The rest of them don't, don't apply, basically.
And two days late.
And two days late.
Now, in the past, Adele, under similar circumstances, I think we've done this one other time.
You did this one other time under similar circumstances. It was also a two-day late penalty.
And could you give me some guideline maybe on how much that we assess and what we weigh?
That penalty was, I believe, about $5,000, and I, and it was the decision of this body to charge, it charged them half a percent a day. So they paid a 1% penalty versus a 10% penalty. That was back in 2015. We haven't had a request since then for a reduction of penalty.
I do remember that past situation. It was very similar to this, except for there was no medical emergency. I mean, I wonder if the sick child doesn't, doesn't apply to A there, under medical emergency.
The problem is that A, this, it's just how it was written, has to be the owner or an immediate family member's property. Or it was the secretary who was asked, that's why we-
That's why we go to E, because I think it's unanticipated, because I think one thought, he thought that she paid it and then realized she didn't, and no.
But I mean, you're right, that medical emergency.
Well, one thing that we always try to do is consistency. And so if we don't feel that we can find justification in those items listed in the code, then I think our next option is to go to the consistency, which is what we did last time.
Just percent?
Just a half a percent.
Per day.
Per day.
I'm comfortable with that. I think that maintains the integrity of the system. It's consistent with what we've already done. It still leaves a penalty in place which incentivizes people to get these things done on time and to conform with the state statute. But I, I feel that we're still in line with the statute, because the statute allows for this public consideration. And so I would make a motion then for a personal property penalty reduction to one-half of 1% per day on this case, and it's by understanding, two days late.
It was two days late. It came in on the 17, two business days late, yes.
Yeah, so we are two business. It wasn't a weekend.
No, it wasn't.
Okay. Well, I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion. Ricky, did you understand that motion? A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can I ask a question? Who writes the letter to them? Okay, thank you.
Hey, next item is a presentation and a report on our 2018 Washington County tax sale by our clerk auditor, Kim Haven.
Afternoon, Commissioners. I think you have in your packet a copy of the report for the tax sale. I'll just give a bit of history with it. The process started about the first of February with 276 parcels that were in jeopardy of being sold, because they had taxes that were five years late, and ended up with seven in the tax sale, which is, I think we had 13 last year, so that was, that was a good number. All of the seven parcels sold in the tax sale. I tried to talk the buyers out of a couple of them, but didn't work. And so my recommendation to the commission is that we wouldn't ratify the sale on tax sale property number 53 and number 71. And I'll just give a bit of, a bit of history on both of those. Number 53 is a parcel in Bloomington, two homeowners. I don't know if they decided ahead of time that one of the homeowners was going to get a little extra property when he built his wall, but he did. The property goes from, at the street corner, zero wide, as it goes back towards the back of the lot, it's seven feet wide from what the property line was. So those property owners got together and created another parcel that was several hundred square feet that accommodated the wall being in either the wrong place after the fact, or they, it was something that they decided before the fact. Later on, one of the homeowners lost his home in foreclosure, and, but the little piece, the little sliver, was not encumbered by the loan, so that wasn't lost in foreclosure, so it remained with the original homeowner. And there's really not much that a buyer could do with that property, other than maybe being nuisance, I don't know. I don't think the buyer knew what they were buying exactly.
Extremely long and sliver, 100 feet long?
It's more than 100, I'll tell you here. I had the, I had the recorder's office do a bit of work. It goes from zero feet wide at the, at the street to seven feet wide at the back, over the course of 178 feet in distance. So it's a, it's a skinny little pie piece. It's inside the wall of the, of the homeowner that's on the south, and he's been using that, it's been landscaped and all that. My opinion would be that the county would not accept that sale, that would take ownership of it, and then work with that homeowner to get that in his name to a purchase from the county. I think it'd be somewhat, not in the benefit of the taxpayer, to have somebody else own that piece, and then try to negotiate that from a different position than the county would have. So that's obviously your call. The second one, tax sale parcel number 71, is over in Washington in Indian Oaks. On this street corner, there's, the street kind of comes to a T, and the road goes both directions. Five years ago, both those corners were in the tax sale. One of them sold, and one didn't. The one that didn't sell, we took ownership of and got that to the city of Washington. The other one sold to someone who thought that would be a good purchase, and they haven't paid the taxes on it for the five years since they bought it, once they kind of went and seen what, what it was. And it was purchased again this year, but it's really part of the roadway. I went over and measured with what the information I got from the, from the assessor, or from the recorder's office. Those little triangles, it amounts to 95 square feet, and it's just the curve, the asphalt comes up straight, but they've curved the street, and the, and the little triangle that curves is 95 square feet. So I don't think that that would be advantageous for anyone to own that oath in the city of Washington. So that would be my recommendation. If you have any questions about the tax sale or any other things with that, I'd be glad to try to talk to those.
Well, I'm interested in this little pie-shaped piece, and I can see that it's 633 square feet and about one-hundredth of an acre. Also, because it compresses down to nothing, at its point, it has no legal access.
The backside of it, where it's seven feet wide, is it, it kind of, it doesn't exactly front Pioneer Road, the frontage road that goes from Bloomington down to Sun River, but it, that, that's the backside of it. And it's all enclosed in a wall, and the purchaser would kind of have to, almost have to trespass to get onto the, onto the property.
Okay. Well, very good. I guess I'll make a motion that we accept, we take action on this? We accept the report?
Yes. We would refund the money if, on either one or both of those that you, we sent the sale, we refund the money to the purchaser, so would need a motion to either, but obviously, I'm just making a recommendation, you can obviously conceive what they are and-
Same purchaser on both parcels.
Yes.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the recommendation of our clerk auditor, Kim Haven.
You need to be cautious about accepting too many of my recommendations, Commissioner.
In regards to the tax sale, that would be my motion.
So I'll just clarify that. So what that motion was, just to restate it then, was that all of the sales are accepted, except for sale number-
53 and 71.
53 and 71. But in the interest of, in the public interest, that those be rejected, that property stricken off to the county.
We have a motion.
I'll second that. I have a little hesitation seconding it, just because I think that buyer beware, and I don't think this buyer did his homework. But clearly, the one piece deserves to go to Washington City as part of the road, and it just makes life more complicated for the county, if we have to run it through the tax sale again, and have to realize what they've bought. And it's pretty much the same argument on extremely thin ice sliver, and that's the only one really that I have some hesitation with. However, with those reservations, I do second your motion. I think this is just cleaner, and it will save future work for the county by doing it that way. So I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes.
I would just say on the, on the sliver, we end up with a few of those where a second parcel's created between two property owners, and then one gets encumbered by a loan and one doesn't. That's not, that's not like the first time that's happened. It happens kind of, kind of a regular basis. The seller thinks he's selling it, and the buyer thinks he's buying it, and neither one of them's right about that. So we'll try to make that right with the, with the current property owner. Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Hey, item number six is consideration of an update to the Washington County Employee Policy and Procedure Manual regarding copyright conflicts of interest. Eric?
So, Commissioners, this is one where, had an issue come up, where it's just unclear at times, when the county hires a photographer to be out doing work, we obviously, in our tourism department especially, we take some amazing pictures. We have an amazing county. And in an effort to just come up with a clean policy that was easy to understand, we didn't have anything in our policy manual. And so what we wrote up is that any time that someone is on county time or using county equipment, then they're doing that work for and on behalf of the county, and photographs are owned by the county, so that then that employee would be restricted from going out and selling them or using them personally. That's how it's written up. You guys obviously can make any changes to that, but we feel like that complies with copyright law, and it's just a clean, easy way for people to know when they're doing something that is theirs, or when they're doing something that is the county's.
So is, is the county, and I kind of looked through this, and I couldn't see it. Like, my concern here, though, is I don't want the county selling a piece of art that would compete against private photographers. So where would that be covered?
Well, I mean, that, that would probably be covered by our property disposal section-
Okay.
-of the code. And it would, it would fall under that.
Okay.
We, we could stick a prohibition in there, but I wouldn't put that in this section-
Right, it doesn't fit here. But that's an excellent point. Okay, that, that satisfies me.
Yeah, I've had a chance to read and review section nine policies as well, and I'd make a motion in support of the update to the Washington County Employment Policies Manual Regarding Copyright Conflict of Interest.
And I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number seven is consideration of resolution number R-2018-2332, a resolution approving acquisition of a communication site from the Bureau of Land Management. We have several individuals from the Bureau of Land Management. We have Mike Herter, Kendra Thomas?
Yeah.
Thomas and Rachel. Thank you for coming.
Yeah. Pleasure to be here. My name's Kendra Thomas, and I'm a realty specialist for the Arizona Strip. And I can give you guys a brief history on this, but first, right into-
Well, I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm the brand-new district manager for the Arizona Strip. Other side of the line, technically, in Mojave County, Oconino County as well, Arizona. Just returned from a 10-year hiatus in Nevada, so happy to be back. Wanted to let you know that we're more than willing to discuss shared issues that we might have with Washington County.
I was just going to say, we really appreciate your coming in and meeting us, and we do want to get to know you better, Mr. Herter. It's clearly Arizona, but it's, it falls clearly also within the economic sphere of St. George and Washington County. That bridge across the Grand Canyon hasn't been built yet, and so seems like a lot more of our southern Utah people recreate and run cattle and, and operate mines and other things like that, that live in Utah than probably live in Arizona. So that's probably why your office is in Utah as well. We recognize that, and we appreciate the great work that you and your staff do.
What part of Nevada did you just come from?
I was in Ely, Nevada, for 10 years. Prior to that, I worked here on the Arizona Strip of Wildlife.
Great. I think Arizona Strip's some of the most, best country you can be in, so.
Beautiful.
It's great.
I'd like to speak just a little bit to this proposal that we've got, and by the way, anytime they want to sell us something at this price, which is-
Yeah.
Basically, government-
We're starting our relationship off on a very good-
Transfer. That's phenomenal. I also want to clearly state right out front that I may have a slight potential of interest in, that conflict of interest, it's not going to bar me from voting, but I want to explain it. We have a facility down on Seg Miller Peak, and we've had it for many, many years. There was a gentleman that worked for the BLM, and his name was Bill Wells. Bill Wells was a radio tech and a ham radio operator. I'm a local ham radio operator, and that's how I got to know Bill Wells. And he was always interested in providing emergency communications and things for the area, and so he thought it would be really a great idea if the county and/or ham operators could put something in that facility, and he would allow it to be co-hosted. When I say he would allow, we actually went and got a permit from the BLM for the amateur radio that was there, and I also did communications for the county and the sheriff's office at the time. I was the emergency services director. And so it did make an excellent ham radio site, and I put two radios in there. One of them, I basically donated to the county, and we use that in our emergency services. The county gave me a check for what I had spent on it, and I endorsed the back of the check and gave it back to the county, but I still have one repeater that still is my personal property. And we've also added a search and rescue repeater that is owned by the county, a special weapons and tactics repeater that is used by the sheriff's office and owned by the county. And we used to run our regular sheriff's repeater off of there, and it was our main repeater. We've now shifted that over to the road department uses that repeater primarily, and it's a backup for law enforcement. And law enforcement itself, the primary sheriff's repeater has migrated to 800 megahertz, and it relies on several smaller, lower sites, and there are more of them in their trunk, kind of an elaborate thing. But we utilize those, and we utilize them on a regular basis, and it's worked out very, very well for the county. I think this is a great gesture by the BLM since county and my own, one single repeater. So I need to come back to county and probably get an agreement for that to be there. But anyway, this is, Supra and Kendra has been amazing to work with, and I'm sure that she takes that leadership from, from Mike. And we've all known Rachel for a long time, so- And I'm sure that she takes that leadership from, from Mike. And we've all known Rachel for a long time. So I would speak in support of resolution R-2018-2332 that will allow for this transfer to county and then allow for the county commissioner to sign the bill of sale as zero cost attached to it. Transfer these assets to the county.
And I will second that motion.
Before we vote on the motion, would you like to add anything?
No, I think he did a great job. I think he knows more about it than I do.
Great.
So yeah, here's a picture of the site. Started with the strip. And I went up to the site and BLM hasn't been.
Yep.
So BLM hasn't been at sites. So we were like, what do we do with this building? And I talked to Dean and he said that the emergency services was in there and you guys don't want that building to be removed. So I just thought this was a great way to give it to you guys and you guys are the ones that are in there utilizing it. From a realty specialist standpoint, you will need to have your authorization still with BLM and the county has one. And so those will need to remain in good effect. And when renewal comes up, you have to renew them if you still want them. But as far as the county goes, if you need to work out something with them, this will now be their property as soon as the bill of sale is signed. So the bill of sale is just a legal document. I think you came in, Eric, but did you have any questions on it? Okay. So it's just basically saying that the property and it describes it is no longer the Bureau of Land Management's today when you guys sign it. And we need two witnesses to sign as well. It will then be yours.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion? Say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very, very much. We appreciate it.
Can we sign it right after the meeting?
Um, sure. Yeah.
Hey.
I'm okay with you.
We're about done.
Thanks. Right. Item number eight is consideration of resolution number R-2018-2333, a resolution approving and adopting the severe storm response to appendix F. And we're supposed to have Pete here, but I do not see him here. So I know Commissioner Cox, you're kind of over that department. Would you?
I, I have had a chance to review that. Ricky sent me an email and, and said there's been some kind of a change on item eight. So I didn't know whether Pete was wanting to have us table this or if he just made some slight change. Okay. All right. So I reviewed this and I did suggest a couple of changes. And so it sounds like Pete has incorporated those. Again, this is an effort to keep our emergency management plan a living document and reflecting the reality that we live in today. And that means we need to address these things from time to time. So having reviewed it, I make a motion in support of R-2018-2333, a resolution approving and adopting the severe storms response annex F as part of our emergency operations plan.
And I'll second that motion.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Moving on, we go to item number nine, which is consideration of resolution number R-2018-2334, a resolution approving Tourism Advisory Board Recommendations for Funding for Small Business Summit, the Southern Utah Arts Guild, Silver Reef and the Arts Designs. And Kevin Lewis, would you like to come up and address those items?
Yeah, while I'm here, I want to say hi to Mike. Welcome. Good to see you again. Yeah. So just a quick explanation on these, uh, these were reviewed by the Tourism Advisory Board and recommended for approval. Um, the 7,000 for the small business summit, which is coming up, that's for facility expenses for the Dixie Center. 12,000 for the Southern Utah Art Guild is for really kind of a neat event. It's a photography symposium. Well, they will bring in some renowned photographers who will then teach photography classes in our area. So the capacity for that to spread and, and grow is really, really phenomenal, I think, the opportunity there. The Silver Reef, uh, that's for printing of their brochure and distribution of that through ads, Facebook and geofencing. And, and then the 22,000 for the Arts Design is also for printing of a brochure that, uh, this has been a really successful program for the arts, um, where they distribute that brochure and it's a map of the facilities and things that gets out through the corridor of Utah, H, Arizona and Mesquite, Nevada. So out in the area, good marketing. So those are those four.
Very good. Do you have anything to add, Chairman?
I, I think our tourism board, I will, I will tell you on each of these items, they will discuss them and spend time and, and they've lowered certain amounts and on some they've actually raised a little amount requested. But I, I have been very impressed by our tourism board and they seem to really get in the, it's the right word. They're really, like, they really appreciate what's going on in the spirit of it and.
Engage.
Yeah.
Involve.
Good board.
It is.
Mr. Chairman, with that, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution R-2018-2334, resolution approving the Tourism Advisory Board Recommendations for Funding a Small Business Summit, Southern Utah Art Guild, Silver Reef and Arts Design.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Which, which is really good to pass it because that $10,000 for Silver Reef.
I know. I was ready to make a comment. We already passed the purchase order earlier for the Silver Reef one, but.
I think the business summit is, um, going to be next week and they've already calculated that in.
You know, uh, this would be a good item to bring up. Um, it, with the Dixie Center, they do do some funding where they'll, they'll give discounts during certain times. And so the tourism board, uh, their budget, want to have a line item there. So these small things where they give discounts for won't necessarily come through us, but there will be a tie, a line item that will be budgeted and, and that. Hey, moving on. Item number 10 is consideration of resolution number R-2018-2335, a resolution authorizing a request for a road right of way from the Bureau of Land Management near the Purgatory Clay Venue at the Shooting Sports Park. Pod or, oh, Ron.
Ron.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is to expand the Purgatory Clay's venue out to the Shooting Sports Park. Been working with Dixie Power and the BLM on a right of way for a power line through there. And while we were doing that, we decided to move the road over to accommodate some expansion. We're anticipating doing. We're applying for the right of way under BLM's suggestion. We apply for the right of way first because it'll be quicker to get that to move the road. We anticipate going back and applying for some additional ground under our R and P P ground out there to add Shooting Sports Park.
I've also been very familiar with this. It's just, um, it's kind of straightforward. It's in the fall zone. So you just don't want people to have BBs landing on their cars as they're driving up to the Purgatory Clay's. And it's also a very needed expansion for all the great use that they're having out there. So.
I think it's probably best that we keep with the moving targets that we shoot in the air and avoid the cars on the road. So I think you're right, Commissioner.
Was that a motion?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we adopt resolution R-2018-2335, a resolution authorizing a request for a road right of way from the Bureau of Land Management, BLM, near Purgatory Clay Venue at the Shooting Sports Park.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number 11 is consideration of resolution number R-2018-2336, a resolution approving a settlement in the centrally assessed tax appeals filed by AT&amp;T Mobile, Inc. and AT&amp;T Communications, Inc. for the, for the 2016, 2017 tax year. And Eric Clark?
Commissioners, this is one of our centrally assessed tax appeals. Um, it's before the State Tax Commission and the counties and the state and AT&amp;T have, have come to a, a resolution on an amount that everybody feels like would be a fair amount. At the end of the day, it'll cost Washington County approximately $45,000, about $2 million statewide, and our portion of that is $45,000. And, and if that's, there's no interest on that if, if it gets paid within like 90 days of the settlement finalized. So we're recommending that you guys accept that and move forward with wrapping up that opinion.
Hey, Eric, I appreciate, all of us appreciate the work that you've done on these centrally assessed issues and it's difficult. We have to meet with a lot of counties and, and work out these compromises on properties that extend beyond the boundaries of any individual county. I would like to make a motion in support of resolution R-2018-2336, a resolution approving the settlement of the centrally assessed tax appeals filed by AT&amp;T Mobility LLC and AT&amp;T Communications, Inc. for the 2016 and 2017 tax years.
And I'll second that motion.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number 12 is consideration of resolution number R-2018-2337, a resolution approving a second amendment to the agreement between Washington County and Blument Building Services to provide custodial cleaning and maintenance services for Washington County buildings. And Nicole, could you keep?
Sure. Um, so I need to excuse Paul. He had a little procedure done which prevented him from coming today, but so the county attorney Brock, um, who's over the CJC, reached out to Paul and was hoping that would secure some sort of a cleaning agreement with a company that could clean the Children's Justice Center. So Paul booked and reached out to different companies and asked for bids to come in. And Blument, who we currently have an agreement with for the current buildings, um, the county buildings, the library. And then we made an amendment just a month or so ago to the enterprise COA. They were the lowest bid. So, um, we thought it was best or Paul thought that it was best that since they were the lowest bid, we've had good success with them so far to keep an agreement and just do an amendment number two to their original agreement to include the CJC for the cleaning.
Thank you.
Very good. Well, with that, I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution R-2018-2337, a resolution approving a second amendment to the agreement between Washington County and Blument Building Services to provide custodial cleaning and maintenance service for Washington County buildings.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Come to item number 13, which is Commissioner Report. And I, the only thing I have to share is my kids have discovered an old show called The Dukes of Hazzard. And there's a gentleman on there called Boss Hog and he's the local county commissioners, commissioner. And so my kids finally came to me and says, well, we finally figured out what you do at work, Dad, based on Boss Hog. So.
I didn't know Boss Hog was the county commissioner.
I'm not sure that that's the role model that.
No, we don't want that to get out. I don't think anybody else knows. Now, in Arkansas, are they called judges or commissioner?
And I, I looked up and Boss Hog's the local county commissioner, although they, apparently they only have one, but.
Why am I not a Ranford County commissioner if I would have not had a role model like Boss Hog?
I don't have anything.
I don't.
And now I'm depressed.
Right. We have no other items on the agenda. So at this time, I hope we'll call the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.